Take this and that. I don't know. Sounds like there may not be an agreement in place, but it is a time to find them and figure it out. And that's what I was thinking. If somebody else was interested in the food or something like that.
Yeah.
They could kind of say, okay.
We'll give you.
It was about a year before you got faster than things.
Yeah, that was some bullshit.
Was.
I missed that whole thing. Did Chris say anything about being here tonight?
I have some. Somebody just called in. I'm not sure if that's what I'm on.
No time to spare. Did I miss a pledge?
No.
No, we're reading for you. Did you go back up and try again?
Are you working? Sign of the tip.
Why to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Signing sheet.
Oh, sorry.
Looks blank. Public participation. That would be you.
Thank you. I'm Lee Turner, president of the Board of Trustees for the Fleetwood Library.
Ah, okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your continued support. One of the things that we have found is that when we go out into the community meetings, that most of the board members do not utilize the library. So I'm assuming that, has anyone here been into the new space?
My wife's been there multiple times.
Great, thank you. I hope she has.
She loves it.
It's amazing. But because most of the board members do not get in to see and see what we've done, we feel that it's important for us to come out and let you know how valuable the library is to the community. It's been a while since I was here. I do not recall whether we had started construction.
Yeah, you had started when you returned the last.
We started? Okay, well, you might remember that within two to three weeks after we started our construction, COVID was considered a pandemic. So we really had very high hopes for years. We had been saving. We had a very large donation given to us several years ago to build in a library, but his vision was, you know, something like this building, a standalone somewhere where the utility bills alone would have killed us. And it was very difficult to work through the years with him. We did understand that this was just not a possibility. Large libraries like Exeter are struggling because they do have those big buildings and they have a much larger community base than we do. But so shortly after, you know, we started, everything just blew up. But we felt that we couldn't stop at that point because we already had contracts out and we put money down on everything from the construction to furniture. If we were to back out and lose those funds, I don't know that we would ever be able to catch up, you know, and do what we've been able to do. The final total was roughly $690,000 that it cost us to renovate. Fleetwood Borough had given us space on the first floor. Previously, we had been upstairs in a very, depressing is the only word for it, I think, space. I mean, it was nice, but it was from the 60s and everything was middle school size. It just really didn't function as a very good library. So in 2020, in 2020, that was the nightmare year with the COVID. In 2021, that was a rebuilding phase for us. We were able to finally open the library to breathe to come in, even though you had to be masked and we did have limited visitations for quite a while. Most people did a drive by. They were gonna do books online. We went out, handed it to them, and then we brought them in. By 2022, we finally felt that we were normal. We were up, we were operating. It was open to the public at large without any restrictions. We included in our space a teen room for not only our regular teen activities, but for kids that need a little bit more structure, don't want to go home to a latchkey house or, you know, hang out on the street corner or something. It's a specific room for teens that makes them feel very comfortable. They can come in, do their studies. We have tutoring room. We have a space for our youngest patrons where they're not bothering everybody else previously. Everybody just crawled around on the floor through the computer space and everything upstairs, but now it's a complete designated space. It's really, it's an amazing facility. In 2023, I'm finally able to announce that we've paid off roughly $670,000, which for a community this size, I think you have to agree with me that it's, it's pretty amazing. One of the ways that we're able to do this is that even though we're a small library, we have been awarded like the Gold Star because of the amount of programs that we offer for every age group. You can go in these days. You can, you can take line dancing lessons. You can go and learn about college funding. You can, I think this, this week they're doing something with art and making those felt baskets. And, you know, you can rent yard signs for happy birthday. You can rent pickleball paddles. And you can also still go in and get great books to read. So we're really more of a community service than anything else, an information center. We're trying to focus on the folks that need us the most, which are the teens, our youngest, and our oldest. We find that a curriculum of elderly people don't have enough to keep them busy. And now that they can just walk in off to the street because we're on the first floor, it's becoming more and more popular. As they say, you know, build it and they will come. That's what seems to be happening. In 2019, our last normal year upstairs, our circulation, and this is everything that you can check out at the library, was 83,109 items, which again, for a library our size, is a phenomenal number. In 2022, our circulation was 111,571 items. So you can see, we're growing constantly. We were also the fifth highest in the entire library system of 24 for Wi-Fi usage. That means that people in this community, especially because we are so rural, they're not as in touch with home computers. So they're coming into the library to use this and use it throughout the building. Our highest recorded month for circulation was July at 7,322 items. I know my husband's on Borough Council in Fleetwood. I presented to them last month. I gave him the figures and he just kept saying 7,300 items in July? That's it. Our highest increase was October at 27% over last year's. So you can see that since we have the new library, since we have the new space, it's being utilized much more. One of the things we're finding is that because we are so rural and after COVID, a lot of people have gone to homeschooling and group schooling, and they need some sort of structure in order to, you know, put that into their curriculum. And so they're coming into the library. They're coming in in groups. One of the things that we have done recently that I had never seen in one of our reports before, but our new director brought this to my attention, is that we have the capability now of tracking a patron's, not only the number of items they check out, but the cost of each one of those items if they were to have gone and purchased them. And that would include like, you know, if we didn't have our rural libraries, if they had to go into the city and drive in, park, take the time. You know, it all adds up. So we came up with Richmond Township. The patron who saved the most money in 2022 by using the library saved $16,235, that they didn't have to purchase those books. In total, between Richmond Maiden Creek and Fleetwood, the savings was $7,091,385. So I'm hoping that you can see by these figures that your community library is really valuable to the community. I'd like to, if possible, ask that if there could be a possible small increase in what you contribute to the library each year. Right now, Fleetwood gives us $20,000. They also give us about $5,000 to use what we call Tiders in the Park. It's a program that's heavily used by the younger community in the summer months. Fleetwood used to, the borough used to put it on themselves, but they just don't have the personnel or the imagination and everything else that it takes to put these programs on. So they've come to the library and we've taken that over. Maiden Creek gives us $15,000 every year. Richmond has been giving us, I think since last year, $5,000. And we'd like to see that increase to $7,000 if we, if we possibly could. That's really about it. Do you have any questions or comments?
Good pitch.
Pardon?
It's a good pitch.
Thank you. I've been on the board for probably about 15, 18 years. And we work our tails off. We do fundraising all year long. We went out into the community. We do fund drives and the community's been very generous to us. We're just so close to being able to pay off. We had to take out a small loan in order to complete the project. And so we're just very close to paying that off. But our state and county funding all depend on our local funding because they're saying if we don't get local funding, per capita numbers, they cut our funding. And this really hurts the more rural libraries because, you know, we're not in Exeter. We're not in St. Innspring or Y-Missing, where we've got a much larger base to draw from. But as our programs increase, circulation increases, the number of people coming through that door is increasing and they're, they're being generous. We think by the end of this year, we'll have, we will have the loan paid off. I know we will. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good, actually, it's a reasonable request.
Thank you.
What you're asking for.
Yeah, I know. We realize that you're the smallest of the creed, but it's still amazingly heavily used by Richmond Township.
Money well spent.
Yes, yes. And you really should stop in because it's just such a beautiful space.
I'm going to keep selling.
Yeah, I know. People can't believe it the first time they walk in because it's a parent's space. That was so musty and, you know, had the 60s furniture and everything. So that's great. But if I can ever answer any questions, you can always be reached at the library.
I'll make a motion. We increase it to $7,000.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
One second.
Thank you so much. I should have gone up. I really appreciate it. And we really, every cent helps. Thank you.
All right. Okay, approval of the minutes. We start February, amended February 13th minutes. We had a, someone request some amended minutes?
Yes. For the 330 Mine property, they wanted everything pretty much written out as to Jeff's conversation with us. So we added a few sentences in there for him.
Well, you're confident.
Yeah, basically, she wanted to make sure that it stated that the vehicles must be licensed and operable before anything can be passed.
I see that right here. I'll make a motion. We approve it.
One second.
Call it a favor?
Aye.
Now we have the April 10th. You have the, excuse me, March, March 13th. March 13th minutes, I went over. I didn't see anything. It was.
I thought it was good.
I'll make a motion. We approve it. One second. Call it a favor?
Aye.
Code enforcement.
All right. Couple of things that are lingering. We've got a property on Crystal Ridge that has a couple cars. We're working with the attorney for the estate. If you're just about, there's a couple there yet. Try to get them removed. Oftentimes it's tough with the titles and things, but we're getting rid of them. 791 Fleetwood Line Road, that'll come to zoning hearing board, I believe at the end of this month.
They've actually changed that to the end of next month.
Okay.
They moved it now.
All right. So the end of next month for that's hearing for a special exception. Recurring. We thought we were good with 53 Milltown. They started up burning it again happily, so we're just gonna issue citations.
And we were just talking about that earlier. So there was a cop in there for a while.
Yep, it was good for about a month, but we sent that last letter out. I talked to the neighbor and he said that things had stopped. So there was no burning, but now from what I understand, it's actual force. So citations or no more letters.
What's, what's the address name?
53 Milltown.
What's the name here?
You have it. Mark and Nicole Gaskin.
All right, that's another thing. Okay.
And the forementioned, everybody's favorite, 330 Mine. I'll keep, my last conversation with him was to get rid of the tractors and he said he would because he said there's no sense. He's coming out because I'm not gonna like that, broken down tractors that he has. So that's the last thing I believe that he has to get rid of. And then go out and verify it. I'm getting tired of that situation.
Been on going for years.
All right.
But are the cars compliant now?
Supposedly they are, from what he tells me. Haven't been on the property yet, but we're getting close, so. I think that's pretty much it for, for those issues. We issued 11 permits. Total construction value of $707,294. 29 building inspections performed and a couple of zoning and property maintenance things. Now I just found out about a commercial work without a permit yesterday. Heading into Fleetwood, so I'll address that tomorrow. Okay, I'm out there. But other than that, I think we're in pretty good shape. Scott, what else did I want to bring? Was there something else that I could touch upon?
Maybe not the sheeting mountain thing, is it?
Yeah.
Not necessarily, no.
That wasn't it, but I happened in touch with Kenny Weaver. They'd like to do an addition up there. And I did, I talked to Scott briefly and he has a land development plan when he did the paper. He would like to hopefully, maybe for this project, get a waiver of land development since he has that project already completed. He's gonna need to address, see what he had for stormwater. Thought he would have had a plan together by this point in time, but I guess he didn't have it finished yet from his engineer. So that should be coming in front of you probably.
I think, and to that point, another question for the board and Chris on that, just to make sure the procedure stays consistent with what has been kind of adopted as the official or unofficial procedure. Should they have that plan or whatever they're proposing with a request submitted to supervisors, planning commission? Or was there a procedure for that that we want to follow if they're asking for that waiver of involvement? I know it's kind of a, seems like one of those things everybody can handle slightly different. I just want to make sure.
I mean, I, I think we ought to defer to the planning commission for recognition. That's a good thought, too. I don't like to take things away from the planning commission that are properly within the purview of the planning commission.
So I think if they submit something, we can, between Jeff and I, quick give them a little bit of a, a take on what we see on it.
We haven't seen a plan yet. We haven't had one to look at yet, so. But I think that'll be coming in.
I just wanted to make sure what we think is proper.
If you had nothing that would require a planning commission meeting for the next couple of months, I would say, well, maybe it's not worth having a meeting at the planning commission just for this.
Sure.
I mean, have you been?
Well.
Business for the planning commission?
We had two plans that could have been discussed with the planning commission. Only one showed to discuss it. The other one is looking towards the variance for what they proposed. It was basically that the Fleetwood Borough Authority and the property there, they were looking at the solar panel. The location put them in a position where a variance might be needed. And then the other one was there was the renovations to the Sheets building. They came in, but they have a couple more steps before the planning commission where it was gonna be fine with the procedure. So we were, but it depends on the timing. There may or there may not be, really.
I'd still recommend it go to the planning commission.
I would too. All right, yeah, start there. That's kind of the direction we gave them. That you should start there and then have that recommendation come to this board.
We always like to see comment from them.
Understood. That's all I have for right now. SEO report.
One thing I wanted to add with the LTO report is Brad, who from LTO had stopped by last week. We went over some of the sewer pumpings. And he said he stopped over at Dumpin' Donuts because I guess, I don't know if he just wanted to go over and take a look at it or if they had gotten phone calls. He said there was an issue over there. The sewage was discharging from one of the broken laterals, but they were getting that fixed. So there's several ones aware of that.
Hush. That's relatively important. I would say that is, it's not even a report, but it's important.
Yeah.
So they're on top of that?
Yes.
Police report. I see Chiefs here.
All right, good evening. Sorry I was late. Is it run around another game?
It's okay.
Thank you. Do you want me to read? You guys have any questions about, I don't have a whole lot on here for this one.
No.
Any questions from, from the board?
I see a little activity in Sheets. We've known.
Yeah, yeah, we were only in Sheets once in March.
I see.
For retail theft, which is of alcohol, which has become very, very common for us. We had a DUI. The guy was a 232, so it's good we got him stopped. A bunch of fraud complaints, one in the excess of $10,000 that went to my CI. What else? 138 calls of service. Nothing too particular outside of what we dealt with. We ordered a 2023 Ford Explorer to replace our 2017. I don't have a delivery date on that. The only thing that I really had for you guys was the, me and Jen have been working with the tire dumping issues. We were able to get, a guy showed up last week, I guess it was Jen, that dumped a bunch of tires that weren't authorized to dump. And also the vehicle he was in also came back from an Ole, Ole address. So I tracked him down, so I made contact with him. He was actually dumping the tires, which I was gonna verify, for a township resident. I said, probably not the way to go about it. I said, he should probably at a minimum be with you. Maybe he doesn't have a truck or whatever. I can understand that, but he should get, he should have been with. Guy had surgery or something. He was doing, a guy who's, it was a family member. He's doing him a favor. So I told him that's, that's not how we do things. I said, but more importantly, the fact that he dumped the wrong tires. And firsthand, he goes, well, I didn't really see. I said, well, you can't miss the signs. I say, the signs out there all but slap me in the face because they're fluorescent. So he apologized to me. I was able to verify it. So I'm not gonna cite him for that. But he did come out and get the tires and remove them. Two of them were not his. I didn't get to talk to you, but he removed the ones that he put in there. So we solved that issue. My guess is it's probably gonna continue because war obviously is out. And we'll just take it by case by case basis and try to keep the handle on it. But it's like anything else, people see, especially tires, because everyone knows you have to pay to get rid of tires. And they know they can come out here and dump it. That's, so I'm sure we're gonna see more of this. So we'll, I'll, I'll work with Jen when we get something on video that I can work with and we'll just try to curb it that way.
Yeah, the big thing is when they're not in compliance with the type of tire, that creates a problem. You know, we have to police it down, check everybody that's in here that they're a resident.
No, I don't think so either.
Right.
For the, for the issues that do come up, when they do come up, Jen, Jen is good with getting that information. And then, you know, I can check if we get a red. I can check and see, one, if they're a township resident. The two, if they're, if we can, we can track them, not like I did with this guy. He was warning, he apologized 100 times to me. So listen, just come get the tires and make sure that township resident is with you in the future. So I don't think, we'll see how it goes.
I have a little different way of thinking of that. I mean, I would rather see somebody from out of the township dump them in my bin than dump them on Eagle Road.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
It's, you know, you gotta look at it two different ways.
And, and we do. I'm not saying we don't. Because you're right, you know, we end up, I think, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, just not that long ago, we had a thirty tires on dump on Mine Road.
Oh yeah, that's a popular spot.
Right, because there's nothing, there's nothing around. It's easy to come in at night, dump your tires and, and no one ever know the difference, so.
I have Robbie picking up tires all over the township.
So we'll, we'll be careful about, I think, we've been pretty good about who we should be looking at and who we shouldn't be.
Yeah, and after bringing in man, those rims are smaller ones. Oh, we gotta nip that.
And that's what that, that guy brought in. It was all small tires, so they were not in compliance with what the signs were. So like I said, I didn't have to sign or anything. I didn't take it that far. He was apologetic about it. We just made sure he came out and got them, so. We'll, we'll deal with it on a case by case basis.
That's the best.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Anybody else have any questions?
Personal level, neighbors were wondering, there was some law enforcement activity on Schuler Road. Were you part of that or was that?
Schuler Road?
Schuler, right, uh, above Lily.
No, I, I do know, if it's today I'm thinking of in question, I know the sheriff's department was out there. But.
I wasn't there.
Yeah, because I know there was a detail, I wanna say it was Schuler Road, a couple, couple, maybe last week sometime. So what they do is, so they have a warrants division. They also do all. So what they do is, so they have a warrants division. They also do all the civil stuff. If they don't need our assistance, basically what we get is, we just get an advisory saying that they're in, in our area and no assistance required. So I have no idea what they would have been doing. In order, we ask. I mean, they have jurisdiction to do it, so. But I'm thinking that's probably what was going on. So it's, it could have been a civil matter, that's all I know. I would say if there was a bunch of them, it was, it was more likely a warrant.
Yeah, there was, there was a bunch. I wasn't there, but I heard it from multiple, you know, neighbors. Hey, what's going on? What's going on in the neighborhood?
Yeah. Yeah, so if that's, if that's the same incident I'm thinking about, I don't remember. Nothing off the top of my head tells me that we were involved in something on Schuler Road, so.
Yeah, I figured it was either sheriffs or something about that, so.
So.
Good.
All right.
Other than that, we're good?
Yeah, things are, things are, things are going well.
Great.
Sent a lot of the guys to training, get them trained up.
You're fully staffed there?
Fully staffed, yeah, which is, boy, what a, what a difference it makes. True story. I can't, I can't say that enough. It makes all the difference in the world. We're allowed, you know, we're able to get to doing things that we haven't been able to do for a very, for a very long time, like training. I mean, that's, gotta have the staff and the same guys, you know, and gals. So we've got to start on this year. In fact, actually, training is scheduled out for the rest of the year. I'm, I'm at my budget. So that's it for this year already. So I've had a lot of people step up saying they want training and so we're making sure that happens. But the staffing is making a world of difference for us because we're busy. Every, and this year, just looking at, quickly looking at things, I mean, we're probably busier already this year than we were last year. So the calls continue to increase, our, our arrests we've had, not all in the township, but I think we're at four gun incidents this year already. One was, one in a domestic where the guy actually had a rifle in his vehicle at his feet after, you know, being involved in domestic violence thing. So it was, yeah, we're getting, we've had, we've had, I think, three or four really around the township. We got, we had a car ram another, ram another vehicle to Dunkin' Donuts over a love triangle. It's just, I, I don't know what's going on with, what's in the air this year, but, or what's in the water, but whatever, whatever's going on, it seems like we're already busier this year with substantial incidents than what we were last year.
Domestic disputes must be the worst.
We get a ton of them.
Oh.
Ton of them.
Bless you.
So people do some really crazy things when they're emotionally charged like that.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, so I'm glad that we have, we've been very fortunate with, now summer, of course, it gets, it gets thin because people start taking vacation, but the staffing will help that too. So we're in a much, much better position. Thanks to you guys and the borough for, for getting us there, so.
Good.
Sounds good. That's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No one else anything else, I'm gonna go ahead and take off. All right. Thank you guys, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fire company reports. What do you know, wasn't really busy?
Requesting warrant out for reimbursement for some bills here.
Yeah, I had changed the amount requested because the, on the last page, there was a receipt from Harbor Freight that they miscalculated. You can only see part of it was on there. I calculated it and talked to Ivan, the controller over there, and he did say I was correct with my figures. So he said, if you want to change it, go ahead, change it. I said, I figured I would change it just to make sure that we were right in the number.
Okay. Everything else seems to be in order as far as I can tell. I'll make a motion to reapprove these bills. Hold on a second.
All in favor?
The public library. We've handled that earlier.
Yes.
Discuss ordinance 2013-01 tax collector compensation.
Yes, back in January, you remember seeing the tax claim information of the, I believe it was thirty-two bills that were sent out to the tax claim bureau of unpaid taxes. Norian had put everything together and she had handed me the paperwork and of course, it was just a tax claim. There was no money coming into the township. It was just a zero dollars. So I had not issued a check for that. She had questioned why she was not paid for it. And I gave her a copy of the ordinance stating that on there that there is, it's unpaid for township real estate taxes for going to tax claim. She wanted to see if that could be changed because she said she does more work for the tax claim filings than with the regular taxes. So I said, I would bring that to your attention and see if you wanted to make any changes to that. I did reach out to some of the other municipalities and they do not pay their tax collector for tax claim information. But there was thirty-two total that was sent in.
So she's asking for compensation.
Compensation.
How is that warm-up paid?
For the thirty-two that she had to send in the tax claim, yes. She's asking for compensation for that. And I did look back in Sharon's records and it has never been paid for as far as I could see from here from our files.
Your ordinance says what it says. That's what I said.
That's what I had sent her over and she kind of just said to me that she does more work for this than she does for the regular taxes and wanted to see if we can do anything. I said, I will present it to the board and see what they say. I said, but as far as this shows, you do not get paid for it.
It's up to the board if you want to make any changes. But I would suggest that they be prospective. The way these tax collector ordinances work is that they are to be put into effect before the petitions are filed for reelection for that position. This was a year in which the tax collector will be on the ballot or not.
Yeah.
So if you did something now, it would be, it should be made effective at the beginning of the next term of the tax collector. But again, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with the rule as it stands. I don't see a need for a change. I would agree with you.
Nor do I.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to keep it just the way it is.
Hold on a second.
All in favor? Review request for sponsorship for the Perks Fiddle Fest.
Yes, they sent this in through the email asking us for sponsorship. I looked in the records. We have not ever sponsored. I just figured I would throw that in there to see if we wanted to contribute.
What's a U.S. guy?
This one was a light before.
I, I just convinced the same thing. Is it the same thing as the line? I was trying to.
This is a fair free.
Probably get used to it.
No, that is, you have full library.
We were specifically requested.
I'll make a motion that we pass it. Hold on a second.
All in favor?
All righty. Review tire recycling bit. Kind of think we went over.
We did. The only thing I wanted to question is I know years past, it used to be, I believe on a quarterly basis, we would have it here for two or three weeks. They would remove the bins and then it would come back another time for two or three weeks and then they remove. Okay. I just wasn't sure if, if we wanted to try to do that again or just keep them here the way.
I can hear.
Okay.
As long as the bells were willing to do that.
Yeah. Because then there's all this availability of open, because there, they used to just pull it forward.
Right, right. No, that's fine. That's fine.
BCCD, like membership.
The last time we donated to them was in 2020 and at that time we had given a $25 donation.
Dean Drunkenmuller. Give him twenty-five bucks and he comes and helps a little bit. No, well, let's, we'll stay with the twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to give him the twenty-five dollars. Old business. Isn't it? All right. Engineers report.
There's the one item on there. I have a few other things to touch on, but the bids for the roofing were open for bidders. And then there was the three options. Of the three options, the asphalt shingle was rainbow roofing, which is a little bit. The standing seam and exposed fastener were both Mark exteriors. And I know we, we rebid that to try to get more bids in a lower price and then it get showed through for heat. Shingle options, but rainbow, they kept the same bid, so. That was their first bid there and then.
They were all relatively close, the shingle.
Yeah.
And the stand, see, yeah, expensive, but.
And, and just to the one thing, the other, the other cost that we requested was any kind of damaged or needed to be replaced. That could basically plywood underneath, have to use the cost for that. And they were almost half for Martins. Just quick numbers for that to make up the difference on those two. You're looking at like a twenty-five percent of the roof having to be replaced. I haven't.
I don't think that's.
Looking at it, I don't think it looked like you expect.
It looks absolutely like.
But the only other thing I'd say is this is, the bids were good for forty-five days per the bid. So if there was a need to kind of think about it and act at the next meeting, then options there, but.
No, I prepared that today. I mean, I think that my preference almost was standing seam. My hope was that we could get it in under a hundred thousand and we, we met that. And then so, and I think we're gonna change the way we were gonna fund this, so. I think that the, that bid specification, was there snow stops?
There was none on that, no.
Okay. Because if we do go the way of standing seam, just something I should have thought of initially, they didn't.
There was.
That's a sliding door.
I think.
Did we have a, do you know that came in and asked for this note, for that?
Yeah, new, new Springer roofing, I think, added a, the way most contractory is, if you have a cost, it's not in there, suggest it. You can put in a cost. I think they had one, but I don't think we saw that with any of the other bids, so. There's probably a, a rough idea of what that cost is in that, but it's not there.
Yeah, that's not gonna, I mean, they're not cheap, but that's not gonna add thirty percent to the bid. But it's something, especially, that's something that we have to do.
No, that's true.
If we're gonna do, unless we do textured standing seam, that's certainly, you need as many there. But, no, that, I don't see a reason why we shouldn't. I was discussing, Brian said he would be fine, you know, he prefers standing seam as well. So I don't see a reason why we shouldn't approve the low bid for the standing seam move forward with that. Is there anything else we would have to think about with this?
I'd be on condition of the bonds and insurance and those aspects being addressed. And I don't know, do you want to request a change order right away on the snow guards?
I, I think we should, yeah. And that would only have to go out to a little bidder, correct?
Yeah, just as long as it's not a huge amount of additional.
But it's something I think we have to do, so.
I think Robbie was already in touch with these, this group when they came and looked at the buildings, so he can probably ask them to start getting in touch with them, coordinating and.
Maybe you have contact information?
Yes, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion if we approve a low bid, subject to them being the specification of the bid and the bonding requirements. And ask them for a supplemental bid on the snow protection, snow catchers.
Okay.
I call them snow eagles, but I guess I'm used to.
Hold on a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
Couple things to touch on. One, just because it came through, I didn't officially put it in letter form, but the people at Bible Church, they had. If you remember, they had a land development that was approved and it included an expansion of the building. They were actually making, I believe what they were doing was making the building slightly larger, but reducing a, like a porch area they had out back. And it really worked out to be pretty much the same square footage, the stormwater they showed. They needed to provide a little more about parking to make sure that everything was okay without having to go back through. They did that. We just need to get the letter out there. The reason I was officially gonna get a letter and say that they've met all those other requirements is they're moving forward with utilities, but they still aren't sure when they do the building. So, so we don't have to keep going back and researching where it stood in the file. They agreed to just submit that, get that all addressed, put it in the file so we can say, whenever they are ready for the building, they can just go to permits. Because they have everything else. So just kind of an update there to bring everybody up to speed. The street work, we have reached out to Alan Myers. They are, we're probably gonna meet with them, probably not for another two, two and a half weeks. They kind of have a kickoff meeting, but they might try to squeeze in not all the work, most of the work right before Memorial Day. Yeah, they said they probably can that week of. So we'll have a meeting first and see how that goes and then go from there.
Was there something on Richmond Road, where Mr. Basir repair there?
It was, that was the largest amount of Basir repair, but it was just prepping with the Basir repair guys.
Yeah, I couldn't remember. I just had a question about that.
Yeah, it was Richmond, Virgin Bill, Southern Church, Schuler and School, I think. Schuler had a very small, they had a good bunch, but. And then the only other thing I wanted to double check was, we had Jay's Auto Sales was moving forward a little bit. And then kind of came to a halt where per the agreement, there was a, a minimum amount to be in there for the escrow.
This was an escrow that was set up for inspections because he wanted to do site improvements without a recorded plan. But it is also typical that we will use those funds for expenses. And, and because I think the kinds of expenses that Scott and to some extent I have incurred with Jay's Auto are related to questions that he raises about how to move forward with his project or whether he's gonna move forward with his project or how he's gonna move forward with his project. So they're all related to the administration of the project. So I consider all of these legitimate claims on the escrow, but Jay is, Jawad is contesting them.
Yeah, and, and per the agreement, once it goes below a certain amount, he's supposed to replenish that so that there is enough in there to cover any kind of follow-up inspections. He's, he, he says he wasn't in agreement with some of those fees and is surprised that it's down below that amount. I mean, he's, he's been to our office to sit down and go through items and we've, we've gone over everything, including provided him a copy of the plans that he was requesting. But I think until he gets that up to speed, I think it's kind of hit a.
All right, so.
Standing point, but we'll see.
Has he received that message very clearly at this point? That he needs to replenish those funds?
I think that was.
Yeah, he, he has, I think, fourteen hundred dollars left in his escrow, and it's supposed to be two thousand dollars according to his agreement. And I have signed the agreement, I offered to send that to him via email, and he said he does not remember signing anything. He would rather have somebody explain it to him, and he said, I, uh, he's afraid somebody's taking advantage of him because he does not remember signing anything. So, I said, "Well, you do have bills here," he says, "No, no, I should not be charged in any of this, I didn't agree to any of this." So, we go back and forth and back and forth with this.
I explained this, very similar situation to him, and, um, I also had Ronnie Folk Paving reach out, that's who he contacted, he doesn't have it staked out for where the limits are, so they can't proceed with that. And I told them, really, let us know when you're gonna do the work, but we're hoping by then, we're able to kind of move forward where we can get out there and do the inspections. I think if, I think if Ronnie Folk reaches out again, because they're ready to proceed, I'll contact Chris to see what we can do in that situation, but I, I think we're kind of waiting for him to move forward.
Well, it also brings to mind too, I've got two permit applications, one for a fence, which I have no issue, uh, problem with issue, but the other one is for, uh, prefab shed building that he thinks he's going to use for the office, but he can't because it doesn't meet building code requirements. So, that one will be denied, and I know that's gonna set off the next round of the terrible people we are.
Yeah, we, after our meeting, he did reach out to the Conservation District, and they, they reaffirmed his permit, and I thought that was moving in a good direction, um, but then the other hiccups kind of come, came up here, so. Yeah, I just have a small update, just to.
I think we just have to play it by the book, and he has to refund his escrow account, you have to deny the permit application for the one that doesn't meet the code, and that's, that's all we can do. I agree.
Yeah, I think you're saying it'd be a good idea just to send an email, I can send a quick email, just letting him know that.
We discussed it at the Board of Supervisors meeting, and this is to confirm that you're required to refund that escrow account up to the two thousand dollar minimum.
Okay.
Okay.
I had nothing else to bring up or discuss.
So what's our user check? Yes, thank you. There's nothing that's really changed on the, the link report, so, um, Sheldon prepared one this month, uh, there are leams that are being updated, um, by the folks at my office, but there's no other material change to report. Unless there are any questions, I'll move on to the next item, which is, you know, we've had a couple of discussions about sewer collection options, and, um, just want to remind the board that we have a deadline coming up to give notice to our current collection agency. What is it?
May, I think, May's meeting, we have to make a decision.
Yeah, I think actually by the end of April, because the, the deadline, the expiration is August thirty-one, we have to give ninety days prior written notice, so ninety days before August thirty-one. No, it's not, it's May.
It's May.
Yeah, it's end of May, so we could postpone the decision until the May meeting, but that'll be the last meeting at which we could take action in order to fall within that ninety day period. So, I mean, we have minutes that say that, uh, I guess Brian was gonna talk to the folks at Fleetwood again, I don't know if there's any update.
I don't think one anymore.
Uh, I did reach out to Christian over at Fleetwood, um, they are short-staffed raiders, and not penal for us to be over there, basically, they just, they, they can't take the extra work.
We are contemplating doing it, finding a software package and doing it in-house. We will make that decision by the next meeting, if we can find a reasonably priced software package, it, we think will work, all right? But, uh, that's where we are with that. Okay. All right, thank you, I have two more sewer-related items I wanna bring up, um, one is, uh, see it now, in front of you.
Yep.
I didn't realize this, but I guess I should have perhaps known it, that.
When it starts, as you're aware.
That, um, East Penn Manufacturing is served by the Lyons Borough Sewer System. I am not aware of any inter-ministeral agreement that provides for them to provide sewer services in Richmond Township, uh, Jen, I don't think they found anything here. So I have asked the solicitor for Lyons Borough Municipal Authority to provide us a copy of the inter-ministeral agreement, but assuming because there is sewer flows coming from Richmond Township into that system, that there is an agreement, um, I'm sure
But it's just from.
Just from Decan. I'm assuming we have a duty to comply with their rules and regulations, so they have an NPDES permit that requires them to update their rules about industrial sewage sources, and what kind of materials are permitted to go to the treatment plant, and what the consequences are of flowing the wrong stuff. So the authority is asking Richmond Township to adopt, or to enact an ordinance that approves by reference lengthy, um, Lyons Borough Municipal Authority regulations, that's what most of that packet is, is those regulations about industrial sewage flows. I looked through our existing Richmond Township sewer regs, and we don't have anything about industrial flow, so, and I think that probably makes sense, because with Walnut Town and Virginville, we.
Don't have that interest.
Right, right, it's almost entirely residential flows. So, uh, my recommendation is to cooperate with this request and to authorize me to advertise the ordinance that I have prepared, that's in front of you, which simply cross-references the, uh, regulations that they're asking us to adopt, making them enforceable in Richmond Township as to the sewer collection system that is connected to the Lyons Borough Municipal Authority system. So, in practical effect, this ordinance would only apply to sewage coming out of East Penn. Right. Subject to, so I would ask for your authorization, subject to my confirmation that we have an existing inter-ministeral agreement, uh, so I haven't received that yet, but I'm assuming that they're gonna deliver it to me shortly. They have not set a deadline on this, so if you have any concerns about it and want more information, um, let's take the time to get any answers that you might have questions
So who would be the sewer enforcement, like of this whole thing, I mean, who would determine what waste is going into that, and if there is a violation?
That's gonna be all on Lyons Borough Municipal Authority. But, you know, there's an interplay with these kinds of issues where, um, from a legislative standpoint, to put rules into effect sometimes requires the governing body to take action even when it's gonna be administered by an authority. But if you.
In this case, you have the potential for heavy metal, I mean, I mean, it just, that is, me, especially a battery plant.
So your concern would be, let's make sure that we're not gonna be involved in enforcement.
Right, and my other concern would be.
In the fines.
Yeah. What would be the effect of them, um, bringing foreign material into that? I mean, who would, would we be liable for that? Because it's coming from Richmond Township?
D E P or the E P A would potentially penalize. They would penalize the authority, they would penalize us, because it's not our treatment plan.
Okay.
So, the issues are gonna be at the treatment plant.
Okay. So in other words, if there's a fine, where Richmond Township's reliable, they'll get the fine and have to pass it on to DECA?
Yes.
So who, right, that takes me back to enforcement, I mean, who would be responsible for going to DECA and telling them to clean up the rat? Would that be Lyons, or would that be us?
Lyons.
Lyons. Okay. Interesting. Especially how much I know, I don't know why it's even had a treatment system.
Well, this was all a surprise when I saw this, but it makes sense, I mean, you think, I mean, it's possible that East Penn would have their own treatment plant.
Yeah, I always assumed they did, but.
But it's interesting, because, you know, we never get any kind of correspondence about this, and, you know, for the years I've been here, um, you know, it doesn't come up with our Act ninety-four reports or anything, you know, I mean, they are collecting sewage in Richmond Township, but, uh, it doesn't hit the radar of any of our regulatory compliance that I have ever seen.
Yeah.
And I asked you if you would check with Gary, I don't know if you ever did talk to Gary about this, if he had any knowledge about it, because, you know, all the projects we've done, I guess there's no toilets in any of the projects that we've done in Township that I'm aware of in the last couple of years.
Is there any Maxetowny that affects Maxetowny too?
It does affect Maxetowny, because the letter that was sent to me was.
They include that here.
References Richmond and Maxetowny.
I didn't, I didn't have a chance to ask Gary that, I read that up, um, I don't know what his response, yeah, I have to double check though.
Yeah, I mean, i- if there had ever been a planning module for any of the projects that came through this township, you know, there would have been a sign-off for Lyons Borough Authority, but again, it just never registered with me that they were.
Similar to like, uh.
One public sewer open there.
Kind of what Fleetwood, Bible Church went through about with Fleetwood.
Yeah. Well, do you want to have me get answers, you know, and get this in black and white from their solicitor, saying that they will undertake all enforcement, they will.
Yeah, I would feel better with a little more information, and we'll revisit this, I mean, if there's some deadline on this.
He hasn't said so.
Let's throw down a little bit and revisit it this month, if there's nothing we have to take action on immediately, I just, something sounds funny to me.
Well, let me, uh.
Guess it's a fairly annoying, it scares me.
Well, I don't believe that us imposing these discharge requirements would create liability, you know, if we have liability, we've had it as long as this sewer connection has existed. But now that this has come to our attention, it's not a bad idea to get answers to those questions. All right, I will.
Yeah, see what else you can buy in the.
All right, now, another interesting thing that's come up, I got three separate orders from Judge Feudman of Berks County Court, asking me to participate in status conferences on pending condemnation actions relating to the Walnut Town Sewer Project, and these condemnations are from two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. And what's interesting is, uh, that they were initiated but never closed out by the township, um, meaning there was no, no filing that said that the condemnation process was over, and the way that that ends is that you either notify the court that you've settled it privately, or that, um, you have paid the estimated just compensation, and the condemnee has accepted it, or that, um, the condemnee has not accepted the estimated just compensation, so you're paying it into court. And those are basically the three options, and none of those things happen with these cases. To my knowledge, these are all the cases that were filed by this township in connection with the Walnut Town Sewer Project. So, um, this is not just with the Walnut Town Project, I have other clients who are getting similar notices on other old sewer projects, so this is something.
Something bigged up, Bob.
Well, the profanatories office, you know, must be just cleaning up old records, and somebody must have had a lot of extra time on their hands and was looking at these old dockets, said they're not closed out, so, um, one of them, I was contacted by the attorney representing the condemnee, and in that case, I think we did settle that, because at some point, I think there was a deal struck regarding, um, exchanging the easement for, uh, maybe part of the tapping fees or something like that, so, um, I am still digging up the records on that, but I think that one, if the other attorney and I just submit a filing to the judge and say that, you know, by mutual agreement, everything's settled, I think that one will go away. The other two, though, are actually ones that we talked about last August or fall twenty twenty-two, if you remember, somebody was asking about whether or not it was a paper alley that was a township alley, and I raised a question.
Yes.
With the board about, you know, this troubles me that we have a sewer line in a private alley, I just wanna make sure we have an easement. Well, the easement was acquired through the condemnation process, but it was a paper alley owned by people who have been dead for a long time. So, in that case, uh, what I found last summer was that the condemnation had been filed and then recorded in the Recorder Deeds Office, so I felt from a real estate standpoint, we clearly had a right of way on a private alley for the sewer line.
I remember that.
But what, the step that I think was incomplete in that case, where there's no living condemn- condemnee who has stepped up to represent the interests of the property owner, uh, I think we need to pay into court, and then in seven years, this money will go to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as unclaimed property. And what we need to do is have an estimated just compensation figure and pay the money into court. That should have happened in two thousand and seven at the latest, but apparently it was never addressed, so, uh, I'd like your authorization to work with the court on all three of these cases and to clean them up, and do it as cheaply as possible, and I will keep you posted. But the schedule for these. And I will keep you posted. But the schedule for these status conferences. And Jen, I think, has all this paperwork too. Okay, there's one on April 26. And there are two on May 11. And one of them on May 11 is the one where there's an attorney involved, and I think I can get that one knocked out pretty easily. But the other two, the one on April 26 and the second one on May 11. Going to try to come up with some kind of answer and then present it to the judge or before those dates. I have a lot of Attorney Grimm's files. You know, he handled all this stuff when Walnut Town was built. Going to try to find something helpful in that. I mean, I did find a little bit of information last fall when we looked at this before. But I wasn't looking for this particular question. I might need to get an appraisal to tell me what a just compensation figure is on that paper alley easement. So we just want you to be aware of that could be part of it. And in all likelihood, the cost of the appraisal is going to be more than the damages.
Well, something that has to be dealt with.
It's a, it's a loose end.
Would LTL have anything? Because they were the engineers at the time.
Well, things like getting appraisals is something I would have expected the solicitor to handle. But I mean, when I looked at the file last fall, there was back and forth between LTL Attorney Grimm. But, you know, it's just something we need to tie up with above because somebody at the courthouse is digging it up, do you? And but nobody's targeting us. This is just something that's.
Run through files.
Because the other one was in O'Monoy Township. I don't think anybody's looking on Richmond and O'Monoy Township. And as far as I know, it could be other places as well.
Well, maybe this will be one of the last loose ends. He keeps like a, we're at the end of the loose ends.
I hope it's. All right, any, I guess so.
You should have a motion.
Yeah, I'd like authorization.
Yeah, I'd like, I'll make a motion to give Chris authorization to do whatever he thinks is fit to do this in the most cost effective way. To settle this and put it behind us.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Bye. All right, thank you. Can't think of anything else. Oh. The, the open space discussion. Is there any follow up on that?
The only, so we were supposed to have a meeting with Grande last Thursday before the holiday. That did not happen. We meet with them tomorrow. So they want to, they have this development. I think one or two other ones in other municipalities we work with. We're sitting down to try to gather where we're at. And on our end, they submitted legal descriptions for everything but the open space. And that kind of came to a halt because of the last discussions we had with them saying, where does that stand with the school? So I, hopefully we'll have a better idea of where that stands. I guess the only question I would have, Chris, is if they if they have everything straight away except this dedication of the open space, would we proceed with closing out the escrow until they have that, that they just maintain ownership?
I was looking at that plan sheet you sent around that outlined the location. And what I was looking for was any notes on there that say where this land is going.
They, the intent is to go to the school.
Yeah, but where is that intent expressed? Is that in your review letters or Gary's review letters or where?
It's, it's, it's notes on the plans.
There is notes on the plans.
There's two notes on the plans as well as an additional note having to do with. I was kind of telling them earlier that it spoke to just the reason why the sidewalk went from the school and down into the development, which seemed to be a push by the school to have that go in.
I would not close out the escrow when we have an open issue like this with the sidewalks and open space. I mean, anything that's unresolved like that because, you know, I have seen too many cases where land like this, developers abandon it, it goes to tax sale and you get some goofball buys it for a hundred dollars and then wants to do something with it. I mean, I don't want any of that nonsense to happen. You want to get taken care of. And the way to get taken care of is to hang on to some escrow money. You know, we have a contingency in the escrow amount. And you could, you know, recommend a release of everything but the contingency or something like that. So we'd have something that'll help keep this issue in front of us until it gets resolved.
I think that's good to know just before we.
My recommendation to the board.
Going into that meeting tomorrow, that's good to know because that can be part of our conversation with them to make sure they're aware of that too. But the way I left it was they were going to reach out to the school and pursue their hopes or that the school board still would follow through with what discussions they had. I think it was documented that they were there in the discussions. But they, they leaned towards there was never a final agreement between them and the school. So that could be the missing link that's an issue. Maybe not. I don't know, but.
Well, if we don't loan us some money, that helps give them some motivation to.
Yeah, but if there is, I can't remember what exactly. Well, there's going to be at least 10% of the cost of the roads, sidewalks and that within the right of way. So there's still for some reason, I want to say it's over 150,000. So.
Right, because we could move forward with the dedication of the street because I don't think there's any dispute that we're taking the street. If the work is complete, then you've inspected it. I don't see why we wouldn't move forward with that. And, you know, we can release other escrows, but I take up the money for anything that's.
Encourage a resolution of that because there's going to be maintenance involved there pretty soon rather than later. Nobody seems to take that responsibility at this point. So we got to hash it out.
Make sure they're aware of that too, that their name is on the line until it does transfer.
Well, I think, I, I sent an email around. I have several municipalities I represent that have leased open space to youth sports organizations and they take responsibility for the property. They treat it like it's their own. But the municipality owns it and it doesn't have any costs. But I'd rather that be the school than the township if, you know, I mean, it seems very like a natural fit there for to be part of the school property.
That was discussed.
Yeah, that's the that was, that'll be part of the conversation. I'll send a follow up on what feedback we can get from them.
Can the other thing? Should you set that thing up over in South View then?
Okay.
I really have to put that together too.
Yeah.
Soon or rather than later. All righty. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Double whoop. Step back. Looks like a Virgilville Chapter 94 report submitted and approved. That's good. With all that time. Submitted to Fleetwood Borough and inclusion of the report, DEP, March 15. And I guess they're somewhat through the second the second phase of the sewer.
Yeah, they started that today.
Oh, today.
Yes.
I knew it was this week. Good.
Today and tomorrow, they're going to be there.
And then won't they traditionally come back with us a report?
Yeah, last year, last time I did this, they had a DVD to watch the viewing just to so we could see the actual.
A lot of things to do.
Bad TV night.
Yeah.
Review repairs needed for both Virgilville and Pleasant Hill pump station. Looks like we need repair of a space here.
Hash.
Yeah.
Pretty much, pretty large.
Yeah, I see.
Straight away to that.
Yeah, I think he's still waiting on phrases to get back to us, but he wanted us to know that there's some repairs.
So he's, he's requested quotes and both these?
Correct, yes.
I guess there's no further action till we get that. Nothing with a super sense of urgency now I see here. All right, so let's respect them. Miscellaneous business. Everybody?
Yeah, I have a question. The solar farm that is being done at this time has disturbed a lot more dirt than I would have anticipated. My question is, how do they get or how we force them to get grass or some kind of turf started in order to hold the water when the panels go in? The panel is going to create some like grass isn't going to grow if they're if that vegetation isn't started before the panels. So that was just my question is, there's just about half the farm that has been ripped up.
Yeah, they've started a whole lot more than I thought they were going to.
Yeah, me too. And I'm just asking how, do we talk about that or like, how are we going to get that established before the panels are put in?
Well, as of Friday, no, Thursday, Friday, I'm in there. One of the guys from our office who was stopping out there regularly when they're doing stuff looked at the sequence because he actually had that same question. And just to make sure per the, the sequence there, one of the other things is the pond wasn't completely finalized, stabilized. They kind of have the initial done for it. But they are, they're still within the steps that they need. As far as the stabilization goes, that's the, the ENS controls they have in place are for the area they have shown on the plans. Usually they go in phases and do it so they don't have everything ripped up the way they do. But the erosion control they have in is to, to prevent against any of the major washouts on paper. If there were something to happen, like a big storm, but.
Yeah, they got a lot of sock there and everything, but.
I know.
But that don't allow the grass to start before it's covered with glass.
Well, the amended soil, that's just going to be right again at the bottom there.
They're, they're not, they're not supposed to do the amended soils, which is their final until everything's built. So that way, that's basically, they get everything in, then they do the amended soils just so that they're not running any of the construction equipment on the amended soils.
So they're just doing general ready for this one?
Yeah. And once they, once they have it to the grades they need, which I can't to, to know where they're at on that, I'm hoping they're close so that they will come in there and they should kind of spray seed it, stabilize it and get it so that it's temporary growing until they get to that other stage.
Oh, they see in the pins or how it looks, they have the sheep eating all that grass in there?
They disturbed way more than I thought. They loved to grow up for a year thinking that was their madden. And they destroyed that. So now you've got 100 acres of almost bare dirt, not quite, but you know, but how are you going to establish that grass when there's solar panels over the top of it? There's no way it's going to grow. Will it to start?
No, I mean, they'll, they'll hydroseed it. I'm sure.
Yeah, they'll, they'll hydroseed it. And I mean, it's really the, the height requirements and what they have exposed to allow for it to grow is kind of what the state agreed and DEP says you can still stabilize that area with it. And, and to that point too, the, the site stabilization that once we see them out of sequence, we can say, hey, you're you got to do this or that.
I'm not saying they are. I just had a concern of how this is going to grow back.
I'm just saying that we're, we're trying to keep on it because we're seeing the same thing. And if it gets, we'll say something, but if we're not getting any uh, action from them when we request it, we'll be we've already, after the first rain that came through, we made sure DEP's out there and seeing happy with whatever's going on to know if they're happy out of all that or they're not. They're directed, they're directly working with the, the apple camp. I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure when they start getting in there and doing the temporary hydro seed to stabilize it or mulch it, but if they're still cutting. Yeah, I, I agree with that. I hope, I hope to see that they start getting sections of it and stabilizing it and moving to the different areas, but I don't know on the timing of that. I mean, we can ask them and get a better.
I just wondered how it's going to grow back.
But it's not, I mean, it's, it's good questions. I mean, we're there enough to say, hey, here's questions that are coming in to give you guys answers. So if you are getting asked, we can do that and get that dialogue going. But.
They've been awfully lucky with the weather.
Yeah.
Yet they're so far on behind. That's all I hear. They're so far on behind.
Imagine if it would be a normal year.
Can you imagine?
When the rain every three or four days.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be really problematic unless they get, you know, something happens where they get a four or five inch rain. That would be a disaster.
But I was just curious how the grass is going to go back and establish before they put them. But you're saying they'll still grow weed when the pa- when the panels are there, the grass will still grow.
Supposed to. Yeah, they do. Yeah, the water gets in there. I mean, they hydroseed.
Sunlight gets underneath and.
Yeah, but they're, I mean, they're the panel, but the stellar rain comes in there.
Oh, yeah. Water's not a problem. It's sunlight.
The weeds always grow.
Oh, cucumber, I think, no problem there.
Surprising because the panels that are over off of 222 just past Millenburg. I don't know who owns, I don't know if that's. Those are stationary and they seem pretty low and they have grass growing on there.
But was it there before or was it seeded after it was?
Uh, I don't remember. I really don't, but.
Because they took away all the sun. It's going to be all fresh stuff. That's what was my only question.
Yeah, there they seed. They didn't do a lot of earth moving there. So they were working in the field, but they hydroseeded that. And it, it takes off pretty quick when they do that.
They did it afterwards.
Yeah, that's the last thing they do is take off. Get a little rain on it and it takes off.
I mean, I, I will say that, that amended soils and that grass and the stabilization, that's going to be one of the big things for closing that project out. And they probably have a million dollars at least, if not a million and a half, just in the amended soils and topsoil. I mean, it's, it was, the first quote they got was $3 million. They said, we got to work at that a little bit. It's crazy. But there's a, there's a lot of money in just that one item.
I'm assuming Weaver's Road is bonded, right? You guys bonded that road?
Yeah, we have money. Yeah, we're actually have money to fix that as well. So, yeah. We should be good there.
Good deal.
Anything else for me? Roadmaster's report. Cutting trees, cutting trees and cleaning gutters. It's that time of the year. I know he was, I work with him, the Virgilville did a turnaround up there. Are they done with that up there?
I don't know. Be honest.
Other than that, looks like normal spring maintenance, ready to cut grass. Good. Secretary's report. Payment of the bills. We have to do it, I guess.
The general fine, we have check numbers 10876 through 10909, including EFTs for $156,040.93.
I'll make a motion if we pay it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
State fund, we had no checks. Light fund, we had no checks. Sewer fund, check numbers thirty seventy-one to thirty seventy-eight, including EFTs for twenty-two thousand, forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
I'll make a motion if we pay it. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Walnut Town Fire Escrow, check numbers twenty-one fifty-nine through twenty-one sixty-one for four thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and two cents.
I'll make a motion if we pay it. Second. All in favor?
Virginville Fire Escrow, check number twenty-one sixty for seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
And I'll make a motion if we pay it. Second. All in favor?
And just a reminder, tax collectors having sitting dates this month for locking up afterwards. Tuesday, the eighteenth, Wednesday, the nineteenth, and Friday, the twenty-first. Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, the twenty-seventh, there is a zoning hearing board, so it will not need to be locked up. They will do that afterwards and the twenty-eighth, which is Friday. She will be here for those dates.
And we'll have our normal procedure for that then?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
I can do this three next week.
It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, right?
Yes.
Following on last year.
Okay, and the following week would just be the Tuesday and Friday.
I can handle that.
Okay. I live in there. That's all I know.
Chairman's report. Chairman is not here, but he told me do not delay. So that's his report. Anything else? Public participation? All right, motion to adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I also got a direction from my chairman that said, it was the people over, get home quickly. Yep, the kids are good once.